To the United States of America and to their public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to ask for a moment of silent reflection, please. Thank you very much. I'd like to start off with the public hearing. Donna, if you would read.
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Lewiston on the fourteenth day of December, 2020, at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall, 1375 Ridge Road, Lewiston, New York, and will be available through video for the conference. In-person attendance may be limited. The meeting will be livestreamed via Zoom software, and the public may participate in the livestream via Zoom by using the following links. Said public hearing is regarding the adoption of a proposed local law entitled "A Local Law Amending Article Twenty Seven of the Zoning Code: Solar Energy Systems," an abstract of which is as follows. The proposal, the proposed local law, makes certain revisions to Article Twenty Seven of the Town of Lewiston zoning code, including but not limited to the following: increasing certain setback requirements, increasing certain screening requirements, clarifying the approval process, requiring the submission of a construction schedule for utility-scale solar energy systems, requiring a screening plan for utility-scale solar energy systems to include native vegetation, requiring screening for the construction phase of utility-scale solar energy systems, limited electric energy storage devices to the industrial districts, and setting standards and fees for continued operation of a solar energy system. The complete text of said law is on file at the office of the Town Clerk and is available for review by any interested person during normal business hours and can be emailed upon request. Additionally, the complete text of said law is on the town's website and can be accessed by any party at www.townoflewiston.us. At such public hearing, all persons interested who wish to be heard will be heard, dated by the Town Board, November 24th, 2020.
Thank you, Donna. How we're going to do this, we're going to address the people that are here first. I have the list of people that have signed in. We'll address the people that are here first. I would ask if anybody, after you're done and you want to leave, to please do so. You're more than welcome to stay, but please leave because we are at the very limit of how many people we should have in here. As you can tell, I don't have my, we kept everybody else down the hall, Jeff Ritter, Dave Train. They're all here, but we told them to wait down the hall, Jack Eaton, Allo. So we want to, we want to do it in person. It's easiest in person, obviously. But if you'd like to speak, and then if you possibly could leave, I'm not telling you to have to leave, but if you possibly leave, that may help with the congestion in the room, so I appreciate it going forward. So with that, I will ask Janet Fraz to speak. And please leave your mask on and just talk into the microphone. You could pull it down. Thank you. And I apologize in advance.
Hello, my name is Janet Fraz. I'm a resident of Moore Road and a taxpayer to the Town of Lewiston. I am here with other residents of Moore Road because we are still trying to stop the building of a second solar project on our road. An email was forwarded to the Town Supervisor and the Town Clerk describing the problems that occurred during the building of the first solar project on Moore Road. Many massive dump trucks, flatbed trucks unloading heavy construction equipment, tractor trailers were constantly up and down our road. There was continuous air and noise pollution. Kevin Thompson, the owner of property on Moore Road, has been planning a second solar project on our road, less than a quarter mile from the first one. Petition letters were sent to Mr. Thompson explaining the problems we encountered during the last solar project. We are asking for Mr. Thompson to build the solar project with access to it from Route 104. 104 is built for heavy trucks and traffic. We have not heard back from him. Copies of these letters have been sent to the Town Clerk. And just for the record, Kevin Thompson does not live on Moore Road, nor does he live in the Town of Lewiston. Many residents use Moore Road to walk with their children and their grandchildren and their pets. People jog and bike ride, and some seniors use it to walk to improve their health. So this is our last-ditch effort to stop the use of Moore Road to build another solar project. We are asking the Board to set limits in this new law that no more than one project can be built on a road or in the close proximity to previous projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dwayne Cotter? And I didn't say this before, we're going to keep it at a four-minute limit, just so we can get through. We have at least ten to twelve people signed up and online. There's some people, so, how are you?
Hello, my name's Dwayne Cotter, and I previously lived at 2595 Moore Road. I live now at 2589. When I lived at 2595, they were doing logging across the street from this solar farm. The trucks are so large, they cannot get into that driveway. They were in my yard. I had to go out daily and tell them to get out of my yard. Not just that, we had our road recently. We paved after years of complaining how bad our road was, and these large trucks were running off the edge of the road, and you could see where our new road is already breaking on the edges. I have a grandson that comes to visit, and I really would like him to be able to ride his bike on the road. We are very concerned about this. Like I said, these large trucks do a lot of damage to our road. Our road's not made for that. 104 is made for truck traffic. So we are asking the Board, please ask them or make them come in off of 104. Thank you.
Larry Furra?
Hi, Larry Furra, 2706 Moore Road. I just want to touch on what Dwayne said. As you know, the town did recently redo our road. It doesn't take long. Just even basic farm equipment tears up the road. The large trucks, things like that, it just destroys the road that the town just put in. The road's just not, I mean, the supervisor or whatever could probably know better, but I don't think the road's designed to handle the size vehicles that, these big tractor trailers and things. It's just not meant for that. So if they could enter from 104, the project is going to move forward, that would be very helpful. With the project that they did put in on Moore Road, one of the things that we found kind of disturbing was there was talk of pine trees and stuff being brought in. Pine trees were brought in, but they were put in behind a fence. You know, instead of being out near the road or something to actually block, instead of looking at pine trees, you're looking at a fence, the pine trees behind it really makes zero sense why pine trees are even there if they're going to be behind the fence. You know, it's more like driving down Ballmer Road, going past CWM than it is looking at pine trees, you know, and then you're looking at fences. The other thing was to, if there can be some sort of limit on the hours that construction's able to take place, often they were starting very early in the morning. You know, you're waking up to the sounds of trucks backing up and beeping and deliveries coming in versus, you know, waiting for a more reasonable time to start. And those are my comments that I would just add.
Thank you very much. Joyce Casper?
Well, I guess I have a couple kind of question statements to say at first, but I understand, you know, solar could be the way to the future. I understand that fossil fuels are a role play. I never could quite understand that if you want solar in your area, why you don't buy building it? And I understand that legally, you know, they can pull out any time. They can put that solar field in there in ten, fifteen years. They'll dump it. So now we have two dumped solar fields on our road. Who's going to take care of that? The other thing I kind of talk about is, I want to know why the town would protect us. I don't know how many of you have been down Moore Road. Absolutely no shoulder. Within this far of the edge of the road is a ditch. I actually was forced, walking my grandson by a truck, to jump in the ditch by a truck. I actually, when the first solar farm was being built, I was walking my dogs. There's a girl going to drop off her lunch for her boyfriend. She was texting while she was driving, and I had to jump with my dog on the hood of a car, or she would have hit me. Our road is not made for heavy truck traffic. If anybody's been here a long time, I believe that that truck, that road, was a dirt road until the seventies. So it's not a road that has been prepped for heavy traffic. You have to dig down. You have to look on the stuff that I know a little bit about, but not a lot. But basically, they just come by and our road is finally just paved. Now, you want truck traffic destroying the money that you just put in our road? The other thing is, if there's an accident, and there have been accidents on the corner of 104 and 429, they bypass. All that 104 traffic down our road, which is this wide with no shoulder, and nobody's doing 45, I was terrified one day, walking home with my family, just nonstop traffic. Now you put in construction, again, having to deal with people littering, peeing on people's property, stealing. We've already been through that once. And the other thing is, I'm concerned about buses. The school buses had a heck of a time during construction. You ask some of the bus drivers what Moore Road is like during the construction of that solar farm. Again, I'm not against alternative fuels. I think it's a great idea. Not on our road. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, George, I'm going to try to land this. Chris?
It's Georgie Addis.
Georgie Addis.
One and one Greek. I'm not a resident of the town.
Okay.
That's Solar.
Go ahead.
Velvet, is that right?
Yep, it's fine.
Thank you. Good evening, Town Board members. I hope you are all well, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Chris Georgie Addis, and I'm a project developer with NextEra Energy Resources. I'll be brief. I tried to keep my statement close to about three minutes. We are an American-owned and operated company, and our roots trace back over ninety-five years. I'm also joined by Kevin Overton, here in person, who is an attorney with Paris Beach, and Batun Vias and Adam Siegelstein are fellow project developers who have joined us virtually. By the way of background, NextEra, the affiliate companies, has been developing two solar plus storage projects in the town since before the solar moratorium was enacted. The first is a now-operated solar project called Moore Road Solar. Of course, the energy storage component of this project is not operational and has not been permitted yet. The second is Niagara Solar, which is a proposed solar plus battery energy storage project we have been developing and intend to permit after the solar moratorium is lifted. The proposed project is looking to be constructed on Town of Lewiston landlord Kevin Thompson's property, who has joined us virtually in support today. Both projects contemplate solar with battery and battery energy storage and are located in rural residential zoning districts. Based on the proposed ordinance, which limits energy storage to industrial districts I-1 and I-2, the energy storage component of our projects would not be permitted. Although in short, we believe energy storage should be permitted in rural residential districts, we are here today not to solely voice our opinion, but to also offer the Town Board an opportunity for a meeting with our subject matter experts at a date and time of your convenience to more completely discuss with you the benefits and safety of battery energy storage. Since we cannot provide an in-depth overview tonight, I'll provide a very brief overview now. Energy storage is important because it can rapidly provide electricity to the grid in order to meet energy demand whenever it is needed. Regarding the safety of energy storage, as one of the first developers to propose battery storage in the town, we want to ensure that the stakeholders of the town feel safe and comfortable through any development process. Just as an example, we can offer fire safety training and work with the town, first responders, fire officials, to demonstrate how to safely extinguish any fire and dispose of any damaged materials. Our storage facilities are equipped with gauge valve systems to ensure they operate within their prescribed temperature range and have built in fire suppression safety and fire mitigation technologies. We also employ software controls to practically shut down battery cells in the event of excess heat, and a twenty-four-hour control room monitors each site and can remotely shut down the facility if need be. I am confident that we can provide safe, reliable products that benefit the Town of Lewiston. Tonight, I provide merely a summary of what we can offer. However, our team of experts would be more than happy to work with the town to participate in a comprehensive discussion about energy storage and answer any questions we might have. As I stated earlier, we believe energy storage should be permitted in rural residential districts, same as solar. We understand it's the Town Board's job to balance economic growth while protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and we are offering to help by providing industry expertise so that the Town of Lewiston may embrace renewable energy, including energy storage.
Twenty seconds.
In a manner that is safe and beneficial to the Town of Lewiston. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chris. Andrew Nichols?
Good evening. A resident, 1906 Ridge Road. I talked to Steve several times. He emailed here over the past year because he's been challenging to kind of talk about this topic. I was happy that we did the moratorium, and I kind of want to first start out by basically saying, I'm not opposed to solar. You can drive by my farm, two hundred fifty acres, lots of roadrunner. I don't have a sign up that says ban this, ban that. I don't sign up. I have no opposition to anybody that wants to think about solar energy, develop alternative energies. We all recognize it's a way to the future, so I'm not going to, I don't, everyone, everybody likes to make this, you're either for it or against it. That's not the point. The point is that we live in it, in our district. The point is that there is industrial land in the town. There are brownfields within our county. Heck, we live in Niagara County, the amount of brownfield, super fun sites, wasteland that can never be utilized for anything. Hundreds, thousands of acres, like, perfect locations, industrial property, former industrial properties, perfect locations to develop alternative energy. I do not understand why, and I continue to come back to this, why the Town Board, the Town Attorney, and why we have stuck with this idea that RR is the right place to zone these projects. I understand that we're pulling the battery thing out of the RR. Good, but it's still an industrial project and rural residential. Why does that belong? It does not belong. You know, my family's been here, I'm wearing a sweatshirt, I've been here on that farm for one hundred forty years. Our family, we've been in this county for over two hundred years. This is what we do. Protect our land. That's what we're asking you. Protect, the reason people put the signs up in their front yards out here in the country, the reason people come here and complain about it is, it doesn't belong. It's industrial. I keep coming after that. I shared an article with you from the Association of Town Magazine. And, you know, I get, I get pretty upset about this because that article gives you a court case that was decided right here in the state, that talked about, a town decided, hey, we're going to protect the rural residential areas. We're only going to allow solar to be developed on industrial land. The court upheld the town's ruling. The town has the jurisdiction to do that. So what we're asking you is stand up and do that. I, I have nothing against these guys. They want to go develop solar. You know what? The alternative job that I have when I'm not farming is, I'm an engineer. I get it. I get the technology. I know they can do a lot of things, but that project that he talks about sounds like an industrial project to me. It doesn't belong next door to my farm where I'm growing cherries and grapes. It doesn't. And that, at the end of the day, is my biggest complaint about all this. And that is what I'm disappointed in, the rewrite of the law, because all you really did were plant some trees and remove back a couple hundred feet from the road. It's not enough. What we're asking you is to please take into consideration the fact of all the people that have come out over the, a year ago, when we were having the other farms getting developed, the other solar fields getting developed, people complained about this. You know, it's not just a not in my backyard business. You heard, the people on Moore Road aren't even, they're not really complaining about the solar panels. They're saying, it doesn't really fit in our neighborhood, you know? It just doesn't fit. Why are we getting this shoved down our throats? You know, I get, in the past month, since this just kind of came back up, I've got over eight letters, and today I actually got a phone call. Seventy-one acres. They want, they want it so bad for me, they just, it's, it's nonstop. They want to take my farm. And, hey, we just want to develop solar. They don't want to give you my farm. This is what I've done. This is what my family's done. I am not willing to trade what I do and what we've done for a few dollars for a short-term window. There is plenty of other property within this county for that. I'm sorry, but that's.
Brian Scully?
Good evening. Brian Scully, 1822 Swan Road in Ranseville, but in the Town of Lewiston. Once again, as Andrew stated, our major concern is the zoning here, that these projects do not belong in a rural residential area when there are areas in the Town of Lewiston zone for industrial. In fact, one of the applications before we did put the moratorium in is actually registered to the exact same name on an unused piece of industrial property right now that wants to go into residential, rural residential. An unused greenhouse would be a great piece of property to put a solar panel rather than in the middle of Andrew's farm. As, why not these brownfields? And the easy answer is because it makes it hard for these companies to do that. It costs a lot of money for them to be able to prep these areas and put these projects in. Farmland is easy. Everything's already done. All they have to do is put the, put the project in. It costs a lot more money for these companies. We're making it way too easy for them to do that. So while they're going to tell you it's in a better spot and it's a great place, excuse me if I'm a little bit hesitant to believe them. Because it was almost a year ago, to the day, that we were in this room, and there was a lovely presentation here with a foam board and an overhead view and all these graphics. It was great. And we heard specifically how we would almost not notice that this project was there. That it would be shielded from the road by berm, by this shrubbery, and by this screening that would go on the fence. In this room, we heard that. I don't know if you've driven down an electric avenue recently, but the current project that's on Swan Road is hardly masked from the road. Unless the berm is going to be going in soon, it seems a little backwards that there are a number of small trees that are placed in front of a chain-link fence to be able to do this. So while this new law and the new proposal shows that they will be better screened, that isn't telling us much because they're hardly screened at all right now. So maybe some skepticism for what they're presenting and what's actually being produced are two totally different things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Tobin Gorlin?
My name's Tobin. I live in 1962 Swan Road. I wanted to talk about the solar bill, the old, and I guess the new, and the differences. Because nobody laid out, this is the public, what you changed. We may have talked about it here, but everybody else doesn't see that. So some of the things that I have issue with here, just a quote. "All solar energy systems shall adhere to applicable federal, state, county, Town of Lewiston laws and regulations." That's pretty clear. I think everybody else would agree to that. But I see things that you've changed. I'm going to read from section 362-18F-J. "The development and operation of a solar energy system shall not have a significant adverse impact on fish, wildlife, or plant species, or their critical habitats or other significant habitats identified by the Town of Lewiston or other federal or state regulatory agencies." Now, here's the important part. This is the old law. This portion was removed. "Any and all trees and/or vegetation installed or proposed to be installed in conjunction with any solar energy system, including those for ground cover and/or to provide screening for a solar energy system, shall be of plant species native to the Western New York region so as to promote the habitats of native pollinators and wildlife." Somebody decided that that wasn't good enough for this new one. I wonder who it was, and I wonder what. Sir, you've got it reversed. Okay? That section you just read about the native plants. That was added? That's added. Who added it? That's, I added it.
The Board and the Attorney.
The Board. You're the Attorney? Yes. Okay, so the Board had you add that? That's correct. Okay, great. This is great. Yeah. So in this section, then, tell me this. Well, I'll work with you a little bit. I just wanted to reflect that. I don't want to lose my time here, so I'm sorry. I got it done very fast. It's okay. Go ahead. Where you have, in the new, now you're saying, a berm, landscape screen, or other opaque enclosure, or any combination thereof acceptable to the town capable of screening onsite may be required along the property line that applies to existing residents. You have "maybe." Who's deciding it may or may not be? You? You? Are the homeowners going to get a decision in this that live in that surrounding area? We didn't. Somebody just mentioned Swan Road. I'm the number one guy that lives right across the street from that baby. And I get to see it every day.
Every day.
I invite all of you, come to my home. You can come too. We can stand there. We can look at it. Because there has been no significant reduction in what you see. I see the whole thing as I pan across. And you were required, it was broken down by Mr. Guyven up there, who read verbatim to the attorney, the way that this was going to go, and that was written in, voted on, and approved, and you have not lived by that. You went by the drawing, but that's not what was approved. What was approved was, you would not see it from the road. I see that thing in its entirety from the road, as does everybody that drives down Swan Road. That's not fair to us. We didn't want it to begin with. It happened, so be it. But the screening is inadequate? It's not what you said we were going to have? And I think these other gentlemen were right in saying the same thing that I'm saying. At least give us what you said you were going to. That's all.
Thank you, Tobin. Cindy Sanoian?
Hi, my name is Cindy Sanoian, and I live at 1968 Swan Road. I think we were here about a year ago, and I remember getting some laughs when I said that, are the trees going to be Charlie Brown trees? And you know what? That's exactly what they are. You all lied to us about the screening. It's disgusting. It's appalling. Not only that, not only the visual, what you're doing to the land is unbelievable that you, 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 and the rest of you are allowing that to happen. We live in a residential area. Industrial solar facilities do not belong in the Town of Lewiston. You all live in the Village of Lewiston, I assume, right? Crap, crap, crap. Can't go there, right? Steve, you even told me you wouldn't mind looking at one. Let's put one in Academy Park, and let's see how many people drive by and think it's great. Right? Yeah. Right? You think it's so great? Get on your cell phone and get hung up. Your calls just hang up. For everybody who has a solar farm or is going to have one, you expect to be hung up on because that's what happens. Not only is it the visual, how about the telephone poles? They're terrible. Terrible. What you're doing to the Town of Lewiston is a disgrace. And you had the power to change it, and you didn't. You should be ashamed of yourselves. That's all I got to say. I'm home.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yeah.
Now, we're going to go to Zoom. I do not have a list of people on Zoom that want to speak.
If you'd like to speak, you are going to have to unmute yourself. I do not have the capabilities to do that. There is an option to raise your hand as well if you are willing to speak, but at this present time, you will have to unmute yourself on your device in order to speak.
I see Tavain's iPhone.
Yes, hi. My name is Kevin Thompson. I'm the owner of the property, which is under discussion. I'm here to lend my support to it and to sympathize with the people that are expressing concerns about appearance of these things. I want to make it clear that this first solar farm that they're talking about, we had nothing to do with. We're not, we, it's, this is a totally new project. It's, we purposely tried to specify that it'd be in the middle. Our property is over a mile long between Moore Road and Ridge Road. We tried to specify that no solar panel be anywhere close to them a thousand feet from either road and behind tall, old growth trees. And behind tall, old growth trees, hedge rows, for the most part. I think if a previous solar farm failed to camouflage or hide their project properly, I don't think it's necessarily the board's fault, but possibly the board could hold them responsible. As far as access to Moore Road, it was closer, it was planned closer to Moore Road, and that was the initial thought that they would access it from Moore Road. But I received the petitions from Mrs. Frass, and I call, unlike what she testified to, I called her personally before Thanksgiving and told her that I have no opposition whatsoever to its being accessed but from Ridge Road. So I think there's some misinformation being passed around here. And I also wish we, that this project not be lumped in with another project that may have been improperly planned and executed. I think that's all I have to say for the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Okay, I see Adam Siegelstein on there. Adam, do you wish to speak?
No, I don't have anything to add. I work for NextStar Energy Resources. My colleague, Restorina, has represented us very well.
Okay, thank you. I can't see everybody, Jennifer, that's on here. Do you see anybody else that?
As of right now, no, but everybody should have the ability to unmute themselves if they are looking to speak.
Okay, I think that'll do it. I think that'll be the end of it. Real quick, is there anybody else here that would like to speak of the opportunity?
Can I just follow up to what Mr. Thompson said? He did call me to tell me that he was going to try and see, talk to his project manager and try and see if they could come in on 104. I've not heard back from him saying that he would commit to that.
Okay.
Okay? And it doesn't matter to us whose project is what. It's still on our road in our backyard.
I understand. I understand. We're working on it. I understand. Okay. Well, with that, I'd ask to close the public hearing. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion, second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. We're going to take a short break and get everybody else in here. I appreciate everybody for coming. Have a good night and happy holidays. Thank you very much. To the agenda program. Go ahead. Bill?
The Gillipark repair fence, Gillipark fence are there.
Okay. Anybody else? No. There's going to be no action taken tonight.
Taken tonight.
I do see it didn't make the agenda that we need to go to executive session for attorney consultation. Correct, Tom?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's correct.
One or two items. Not the one I'm looking at.
It's under, it's under view.
Oh, okay. That'll be at the end of the meeting because I don't think we're taking any action, correct?
No.
Okay, so just, I'm sorry, we'll just move that to the end. Two items?
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll move that to the end of the agenda. Anybody else?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as a nominee.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Abstract approval, councilman Bass.
Make a motion to approve the regular abstract claims, number 20-01530 to 20-01689, and recommend payment in the amount of $1,605,011, plus a post audit of $14,022.05.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the meet, regular town board meeting minutes for 11/23/20.
Overapproval is printed.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, under my report, this is from Upper Mountain Fire Company. Please be advised that the following individuals are no longer members of the Upper Mountain Fire Company of Lewiston, New York. Mr. Michael Wilson and Mr. Luke Wilson. Please delete them from our membership rolls effective this date. So. We have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Yeah, just, just so, for the record, Councilman Guyven is attending via Zoom for this meeting. The, we have a change order for the water system improvement project. Bob Lanin, do you want to touch base on that real quick?
Does he use the mask or?
Yeah, yeah, please do, just so, just because we're going to leave the masks on and everything.
Yes, there's, I hope you have your packet. Approve change order number one to the water system improvement project. This is, I had mentioned this in a few meetings ago. This is primarily to call a bit of a timeout or suspend the work during the winter months when the production will not really be what it has been. It's been very good so far. We want to maintain the duration of active construction, but not, we're going to spend that time, not the active construction duration. So this is a bit of a pause for, I think it's 80 calendar days. So, it will let it take off between December 24th of this year to March 14th of 2021, on which it'll resume. The one thing that the board should note, they are currently on, I believe, Lower River Road doing services. They are going to try to get everything, all the services done self of pleasure. If they need to adjust it by a day or two to accommodate that, we certainly have no issue with that, and we'll go with the contract as it's in effect as well.
The only thing I want to say in regards to everything, we got some phone calls last week because they're hooking up services. If anybody experiences some issues, brownwater, please call the town. I know Dan Zano's gone out. We had an issue where a gentleman was having some brownwater. We went out and we basically have to flush the system, but what we'll do is we'll remove the meter to do that so the resident won't be charged. So I just wanted to put that out there and, you know, Terry, if you can reflect that in an article, that anybody has any issues with the water hookups on, you know, when they're doing it, to call the town water first before they try and take care of it themselves. So I just wanted to throw that in.
Certainly, yes. And again, this should be noted that if there is an issue with what the infrastructure that's already been installed, we'll get them right back out there during this timeout. So, you know, if there's an issue, by all means, that'll be addressed immediately.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion to approve the change order?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve change order number one. Looking for a date. Is it December 10th, 2020, or is that the date of the initial?
Well, you can, you can just say approve or change order number one.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number one as drafted.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions?
No.
Zero cost, yes. It's just a timeframe.
No cost, time extension. And if I could ask the friendly members to authorize the supervisor to sign it as well.
Make a motion to authorize, sorry, make a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign change order number one.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you. We'll keep this under, under mind. I know with Tim Masters, I've spoken with Tim, and Tim had some serious, serious issues with our outfall building down the Lower River Road. I know Jeff's aware of them. The roof is in horrible condition, the windows are in horrible condition, and the doors are in horrible condition. Needs work besides that, but these are kind of the ones that you're putting on kind of an emergency declaration, Tim. So what I would like to do is I would like to ask Bob Lanin for a proposal at our next meeting to give us some kind of an idea of a design and a bid package to be able to put out to bid to see how we're going to address fixing the Lower River Road outfall building. Tom, anything else? Does that cover it basically?
Yeah, that'll cover it. You'll need a motion from the board to draft the GHD to propose, to draft a proposal, including a design and bid package.
And I think the best way also is to include Jeff because it's, you know, primarily a big part of his business and Tim, and we'll try and all work together and get to fix as best we can. So, and that's for a motion. So move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions?
Are we going to be design oriented like for what our purpose is ultimately for the building?
Well, this is basically to shore up the building.
Just to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Windows, doors, and roof. So as far as any future use of the building, other than storage, that would come down the road.
So we won't be spending any money that we later have to alter?
No.
Okay.
Additionally, are we looking to get one contractor to do the whole job or are we going to be parsing this out?
I would think you'd have a general, and then they would sub out different pieces of it if they couldn't do the whole job.
The whole job?
Yeah.
What I'd like to see also in there is that whenever it goes out there to look at it, if they could look at those steel structures inside on the floor also.
Yes.
Because that needs to be taken care of.
Yeah. Okay. And like I said, we're working in hand with you and with Jeff, and we'll go from there. Okay? So we have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. I had something else I had for Bob. Oh, so we have our basketball court at Kiwanis that's been approved by the board. We have Greenway money for it. There's been some communication about putting this out for bid. It hasn't gone out to bid. So what I would like to ask is for Bob Lanin to make a proposal of basically putting together a big package, a design, and a survey for, I think there's drainage issues and a topographical survey you need, and then putting it out to bid for the basketball court. And that's what I want to play, a proposal for our next meeting for Bob. Anything to, do you think that covered it?
Yeah, it covered it. You'll need a motion on that, too.
Right.
I make a motion to offer to GHD to do the engineering work for proposals for the basketball courts in Kiwanis Park.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Bob, was that the?
Go ahead, hold on. Go ahead, Bill. Did you start Facebook again?
Yep.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Bill. I'm sorry. No, it's quite all right.
Bob, the question I have is, is the drainage the reason that that basketball surface of the court there deteriorates so quickly?
It could be part of it. I guess the primary reason we don't want to give a topographic survey is so we don't create any new drainage problems. So we address the drainage as part of the new surface.
I just noticed over the years that that has been done a couple times. Maybe it's not been done the right way, possibly?
No, I've talked to Mike Dash, you know, and he says basically every six to seven years, a court's unlikely to be resurfaced.
No kidding?
So, yeah, so it's just a natural progression. And the basketball court is going to be outside of that. The basketball court will be outside of that, so that area where we're putting the basketball court is what needs to be drained. So it may affect the other area, but, you know, the topographical probably will show that, and I know Dave said he's been, and he's willing to do some of the work to drain that property as well.
That's cool.
Okay. So we are, we had that motion already, so that's all I have. Councilman Bass.
I have a request for forgiveness of some of the sewer charges at 951 Hillside Drive for the repair of a pool. This has been reviewed by Mr. Ritter, and it complies for courts with our policy. So I'd make a motion to forgive $48.93 sewer charges from the water bill for 951 Hillside Drive. Josh Wood Heatherkey.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Next.
Motion carried.
Next, we have an application for rezoning. This is a request to change the zoning from a rural residential to an industrial. And again, I'll leave this open, bringing this to the attention of the board to see if this is anything that we'd be interested in, and we want to entertain comment.
Well, I think we're going to take no action. I'm not, personally, and you're talking to an industrial, is industrial housing permitted even an option, Tim?
Well, if you're not going to take action, I don't think you should discuss it at this point.
Okay.
You've got a request in front of you to change your zoning law. I mean, it'd require an entire process, change your zoning laws, your not public hearing, all of those things. So as I see it, it's just merely a request at this point. The town board can take that up if they want to, or they can decline to take it up, but it's something that you wouldn't initiate.
Okay, so we don't need a motion one way or another now?
Just my opinion is it doesn't seem like it merits any attention at this point, is my personal perspective, given the fact that we have industrial areas in the town already. And then, obviously, I would think of the impact it would have on neighboring properties. That's all I can say about that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilman Guyven, turn it over to you.
Thank you. They've received a communication from the Lewiston Senior Club. They're interested in doing a fundraiser to be able to sell $3 tickets during the Business Hour at the Senior Center. And I talked to our Tom Senior in regards to this, and his opinion is it would simply thank the Lewiston Senior Club for informing us of this activity, and we appreciate it, and they hope to continue to do so. It's basically their own project. No action. All right. We also received a letter from Linda Olick, our senior, Lewiston Senior Center coordinator. She would like to terminate John Peroni during his, just terminate him as of December 14th immediately, and there'll be an opening to be considered a later date. So we need a motion to terminate John Peroni. Fan driver. So move.
Second.
We have a motion.
We have a motion, a second.
All in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, discussion, go ahead.
Can we go back to the first one after we do this vote? The first one about the?
Sure, sure, sure. Okay. So all in favor? Aye. Oppose? Okay, real quick, Mr. Jacoby has a comment.
No, no, I just, I didn't catch what he said. Are we tabling this?
No, no, it's just a notification. They've notified us and.
Oh, it's done?
Yeah.
It's their project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Bill said, you know, we truly appreciate you notifying that this is. Okay, Bill, go ahead.
Is the Senior Center window and door replacement project bid? Our coordinator, Linda, reached out to about seven different construction companies. She received back one legitimate bid, and she would like us to move forward on that. It would be $39,450. The name of the construction company is S-W-O-G-I-E-R.
Swoke.
I'll make the motion to do that, and then we'll have a discussion.
Okay.
Before you move that motion.
Yeah, right, hold on. So we have a motion.
Second, second for discussion.
Discussion, go ahead. And Tim, go ahead.
The 39,450 is for both alternates. You have to, you've got to choose which alternate, so it's not going to be 39,450. If you take the one alternate out, it brings it down to 34,9. I sent you an email, but I ended it real late in the day.
Yeah, and I printed it. So you're recommending?
The project to be 34,9 with a 4,000 door hardware contingency, so if you made it not to exceed 39,000.[1785.75]
Okay. So approve the bid not to exceed thirty-nine thousand, basically.
Right. The actual bid will be thirty-four, nine with the four thousand, one hundred dollar contingency.
Okay. Do you want to amend your motion?
I seconded it. Thanks.
Okay.
I think, build it.
Okay, we have a motion.
Motion.
It's okay.
Before you vote on it, does that meet Tom Seaman's approval, the procedure?
Yeah, the procedure meets my approval. You just need to accept the bid and approve supervisor.
Did he hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Good. Call the question.
Real quick, I'm muted.
Steve, you're still muted.
Yeah, I know. We're trying to do it so you guys can hear it and it's coming back kind of, so, yeah. And Jeff.
Jeff, I was aware.
So if you mute yours, we're good, you know, we'll be fine. So we have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Can I discuss financing for it?
Yes.
The Senior Center currently has twenty-one thousand available on their equipment line.
Funding.
Funding. To take care of this project, I'd like to be able to move twenty-one thousand, or excuse me, eighteen thousand from the contingency and the A fund over to the Senior Center equipment to pay for this project.
Make the motion that we allow.
Okay, hold on. Bill, just so you know, Jackie said we're going to move eighteen thousand from the contingency A fund over to cover the cost of the construction. And there's money available. Where did you say the first one was? Twenty?
Twenty-one thousand already in the Senior Center equipment budget.
Okay, she has twenty-one thousand dollars already in the Senior Center equipment budget. So that would cover the cost of it. So that's where it's coming from, Bill.
On a motion?
Second. Sure, go ahead.
Move to move said money as presented by our Bush Officer.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jeff.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
I'm trying to get them to hear Bill. Bill talks to them, but they're still here.
Yeah, yeah. And we can try and relay as best as possible. I said from the get-go this morning that this is just going to be a little awkward, but we're doing our best. Okay, Doug, go ahead. You.
Items from the Environmental Commission. They met last week and they concurred with our resolution regards to the Niagara Falls storage area. And they sent out a similar resolution in support of our position. And the second thing from the Environmental Commission is that they reviewed Eolia stairs on Lower River Road and they embraced the project and were recommending a negative declaration as far as the Environmental Commission is concerned. That need a motion to accept their negative deck. Correct, Tom?
That's not on for tonight, Doug.
Is that?
Or just?
That's Eolia.
That's not the one that's on for tonight?
No.
Did you hear back there?
The Eolia is not on for tonight, but the negative deck will be done when it comes before the board.
And a piece of equipment that's excess, the Parks Truck Plow Blade has met its better day. And Dashnow would like to have it declared excess equipment and disposed of, probably sell it for scrap. That's a motion to declare excess equipment.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
We have to replace the furnace at the Fletcher Road Recreation Building. We have, we need to move on that. And we have a plan to put the furnace in a better location for its safety. Tim, I have it here someplace. All right. The bid was Steve's Heating and Air Conditioning, a price of three thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. Tim, is there any further information on that?
No, that just needs done sooner than later so we keep our pipes from freezing.
Bill, he said it needs to be done sooner rather than later to keep the pipes from freezing. So he's on board with that bid.
I move to accept the proposal by Steve's Heating and Air Conditioning for thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars.
And second. The only thing that I would add to that is that it is a public works contract, so there's going to be the front end contractor will prepare for us to do it on attorney appeal.
We make sure that, okay.
Snapper.
Yes.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
Trevor will quotes in the green spaces. That changed since we talked last?
The only thing, Dave Train said six-six-three Raymond they could do. The other two, he'd like to see that get bid out. So I did not see the bids on that. I did not get a bid. I see Mike's there. Mike, was there a bid on those trees?
There, yeah.
Mike's on the Zoom call.
I can't quote on.
I have, I have two quotes. The lowest one for the three locations was thirty-three hundred. He's priced on, just looking it up now, the price on the six-sixty-three was four hundred dollars. So the total on that would go down to two thousand, nine hundred.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so.
Things that have said that they cannot do the work before the late spring at Bass. And I got two other companies that are looking at the work, but haven't turned anything in the last two weeks.
Okay. So we'll make a motion to do the work at, look for a motion for seven forty-four Curtis Court and seven oh eight Raymond Drive with the town highway department doing six-six-three Raymond Drive. So move.
That'll also be a public works project.
Yeah.
So as I'm, so the way that your procurement policy will allow you to, it's a lower enough number that you won't have to really put it out to bid after just, it'll be on department approval. But it sounds like Mr. Dashnow is still searching for an entity that'll do it sooner. Is that right, Mike?
No, the company that can get it done, no problem. I was just searching for a third quote if needed.
Oh.
We went through five, we went through six different companies so far. We got two, we got two that turned it down. We got two that still haven't kind of come back to us.
Okay.
Okay.
You don't need another quote, huh?
Okay, okay.
Timber, Timber Tree Service can take care of it this week if it's approved.
But we do need to get, I'll get the contractor again. He's got a front end contract.
Okay.
Okay. So we should make a motion to approve that?
Yeah.
Okay. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carried. Tim? Yeah, hold on one second, Bill. Go ahead, Tim.
Just one more thing to add on that recreation building. As you're all aware, that basement flooded to the floor joists. So I'm in the process, I was talking to Mike Dashnow and we're getting quotes on replacing the electric panel down there also because the whole thing was underwater. So that will have to be done also and the prices should be in there shortly. We've got to get that done too.
Okay. So nothing we need to do tonight?
No.
Okay.
We'll probably have to do budget revisions. I don't know if you want to approve one tonight or if you want to wait till everything comes in.
You had an idea, right, of what it was going to be?
I talked to one electrician today and I said, just ballparking to fix the leaky service entrance cable, replace the panel breakers, everything. Approximately how much? And he said, well, and he cited the procurement policy, he would definitely, he said it would definitely be under that twenty-five hundred dollar amount there. He guessed in the thousand, fifteen hundred dollar range.
Okay. Well, Jackie, want to add that number to?
Certainly.
To a revision?
Yep.
Okay.
And I'd like to, if I can have a budget revision approved tonight, moving sixty-four hundred dollars from recreation contractual to recreation equipment.
Can we get a motion for that?
Make a motion to transfer the amount of six thousand, four hundred dollars from recreation contract budget line to recreation equipment budget line.
That would cover the furnace and the panel.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, Billy, you have one more item?
Last item is dog park fence repair. Steve and I and two members of the Parks Department walked the site and we found areas that needed to be improved. Mike Dashnow secured a quote from Fox Fencing who originally put it in. And we would like them to repair it as per our direction and their input. How do we want to handle this? It's three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents and it's something that should be done. Mike and his crew have done their best to repair it here and there, but it still has some open spots and some spots that could cause an animal harm or an animal could get through.
You can go ahead and get the motion to approve that contract. It's just like the other ones that I discussed. It is also a public work, so it needs a front end contractor in town that I can get out.
Okay. So I'd like a motion to approve the Fox Fence to repair the Dog Park Fence with a front end contract. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
That money will come out of recreation because it was a recreation site.
Right. Right. In the budget?
Not if it's contractual repair, no.
Okay, good. Awesome. Okay, thank you, Bill.
Steve, I have one more.
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Part of the, the Parks Truck Plow Blade, I sent you guys over three bids on replacing it. I was wondering if you would take action on that tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think we're going to take any action on the plow blade. I believe, I spoke to Dave Train and Dave Train has some equipment that he could let the Parks guys use to do that plowing. Is that correct, Dave? Yeah, so Dave has some equipment he can let you use.
Thank you.
Dave, do you want to have a brief conversation regards to vehicles?
Yeah. Dave Train did some light work today. You want to talk about that, Dave?
I haven't had a chance to talk to Mike Dashnow about it, but I'd like to request the money removed for three pieces of equipment. One's an extra mower, the two Ford F-150s for Parks. But I haven't had a chance to discuss it with Dashnow yet.
Okay.
Today. But, all right, we have the money in the budget line. They do need the trucks. And then we'll switch over one of my trucks to come over for him to use as a plow.
Okay, Mike. Unmute yourself, Mike. So what Dave's asking for, he sat down and talked to Jackie today. He says he hasn't gotten a chance to talk to you yet. He'd like to purchase you two new trucks for the Parks guys and a new mower.
Do you want me to consult with Dave on that first or?
Well, what we're going to do is we're going to move the money over and then you can consult with Dave. Because we got to get, they're in state bidding. We don't have a contract yet. We haven't, we haven't received a bid yet. So he's just.
I seem to be okay with mowers at this point.
Yeah.
Not really.
Okay. Well, then, yeah, consult with Dave. Yeah.
Do we have time to do that in two weeks?
Yeah, I think we have time in two days, two weeks. Do we need to make a budget revision tonight or can we do it in two weeks?
Um, we could do it either way.
Let's do it tonight. Let's take care of it tonight.
Okay. I'll need a budget revision to cover two trucks and a mower, moving forty thousand dollars from Parks Personnel Service, fifteen thousand from Parks Contractual, moving a total of fifty-five to Parks Equipment. Fifty-five dollars.
And all that equipment would be state bid as well?
Correct.
Correct.
For approval as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, Bill.
Well, the only other thing we talked about is we're going to need a vehicle solely for recreation. Something that they can use to move their supplies from site to site. So it's something we need to think about as a board. What type of vehicle do we need? So we'll have to talk to Mike. Whether we need a small truck or do we want an electric car? So something to think about.
Okay.
I did not have a chance, got it to Mike today.
Okay. And you'll talk to Mike on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilman Jacoby, site plan approval?
We have a letter from the planning board recommending that first we get a negative, I'll tell you what the project is. It's replacing wooden stairs at forty-seven oh two Lower River Road with metal stairs. And they recommend that we make a negative declaration on this first. So I'm making that motion. Declare negative deck.
Second.
Second. More discussion?
Go ahead.
The Environmental Commission concurs.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
The second part of this is that they recommend that we approve the plan. And I make the motion that we tonight approve the plan.
You're approving that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Tom, is we in the right spot with that?
Moving ahead?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, good.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
That was my ask, Steve.
Thank you. Attorney Seaman, privilege of the floor.
So there's a couple of things I wanted to discuss. The privilege of the floor is one of the issues that I'd really like to discuss in executive session under consultation with the attorney. It is a topic. We drafted different or slightly revised privileges of the floor, rules and regulations. Within the last year, so I can't remember exactly when it was, but as the board is well aware, we've had some behaviors within these chambers that would warrant revisiting. So I think that we can talk about exactly how we might not proceed with this regard to certain individuals and any type of boisterous or perverse things. But I'd like to do an executive session. And so that's the one topic. And I know we'll go into executive session later to talk about it. There'll be no action taken.
Okay.
Just kind of revisiting your policies.
That we do have a privilege of the floor and want everybody to follow it.
Right.
Okay.
The other thing, supervisor, that I wanted to bring to the board's attention is just reviewing some of your laws. You have, you have three laws that are related to your, like, long-defunct Recreation Commission. You have an active Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, but your town code has three different sections in it that refer to three different old Recreation Commissions that existed. And I've done a little bit of the historical research going back through. And the last Recreation Commission, it was called a Recreation Commission that was complying with the town code was abolished in nineteen eighty-two, I believe. But they didn't take it off your code books at that time. And at the same time, they also created what you currently have, which is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, which is an ad hoc committee that advises the board. It's an advisory committee. So if you'd like me to, I'll draft a short local law to just clean that up. It really is bookkeeping. You've got laws in your code that are almost forty years defunct. And they need to just be excised from there. So I wanted to bring it to the board's attention here. Just go on to the next meeting. I'll draft a very short proposal. It'll redact them.
Okay. Any questions? And in no way, shape or form, it affects the present?
No, no, no. The present Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee back in the early eighties was enacted at the same time that they, that they canceled the previous, previous one. So it doesn't affect the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee in any way.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Finance Director Ignello.
Yes. I previously submitted six budget revisions to you, Paul.
But Bill, this is where you speak up.
Is she ready?
Yes, she's ready.
Cut me off?
You let me know when you're ready.
She's ready.
I'm ready. I'm asking the board.
Move for approval on the budget revisions for the twenty-twenty budget dated December fourteenth, two thousand twenty. There are six revisions. Move for their approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Motion carried.
Thank you. Our full project is complete and Rockco, which is the company that installed them, has a project accepted sign-off document that I asked the board to approve the supervisor to sign. The town attorney has already reviewed the document and he has finally.
Make a motion to authorize supervisor to, to sign.
Set agree.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
If I may add one thing that each of the councilmen will now, now, now. They'll have their own extension number where they can put a voice message, a greeting on it, and they can accept messages from the community who would like to speak to one councilman if they can't get through to them any other way.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Go ahead, Jackie.
I have, uh, two documents from our external auditors, Drescher and Malecki. They are, um, engagement letters for Drescher and Malecki to complete the twenty-twenty A U D, which is an annual financial update document for the state, as well as their twenty-twenty audit. We've already approved their contract back in January of twenty-twenty. These are just documents for them to engage in the work.
Town, these are the standard, once we've signed the form?
Yes, these are the same year after year, basically, yes.
Make a motion to authorize supervisor to sign both documents as presented. We have a motion, a second, any questions? I just wanna say how happy I am with Drescher and Malecki before we move forward. They have been professional and, um, just a pleasure to work with. So with that, uh, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
The last thing I have tonight is requesting the, um, supervisor to sign the Town of Cambria Sandburnites Senior Citizen Organizational, uh, Contract, where the Town of Cambria funds four thousand dollars for their program. I, the attorney has reviewed this, it's the same year after year.
Move for approval as presented? I have the supervisor, we'll sign, set agree.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Yes.
Yes.
That's it, Jackie?
That's it, thank you.
Resident statements. Yeah, you gotta stand up.
Yeah, I'll come up here.
Yeah, because Bill won't be able to hear you.
Yeah. Tick for tick.
Yeah, right, I know.
Just a clarification, just clarify for me, no action for the giveaway. You can do it?
Yes, you can do it, yeah, that, that, you're advising the board and there's, we, we don't have to approve the, the function.
Thank you. The other question I have for the Sandburnites agreement, that four thousand dollars, where does it go, Steve? Does it go into the general fund or does it go into the budget for Sandborne to help them?
It goes into the Sandborne, um, budget to help them.
So it would go in that line item? Okay. Because, because we had some dispute about that years ago.
Okay.
It's the same dispute, about the six thousand dollars that the county gave for the, for the, um.
That, that six thousand goes into the Lewiston Sandborne, uh, Lewiston Seniors.
Okay, so it would go into Contractual, that line item?
It's a revenue for the Senior Center.
Because see, we weren't told that. We told, we were told it went into the general fund, the one with the four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Obviously, I wasn't aware where it went. I'm not gonna lie to you.
Yeah, well, you get a chance, I'll tell you.
I trust, I trust, yeah.
Well, if you get a chance, I'll tell you the whole story, uh, story about how we got the four thousand dollars.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
And Jeff?
Yes, I would just want to recognize operator trainee Pete Fortino, who, uh, went five weeks of, uh, schooling at, uh, SUNY Morrisville and, uh, scored top of his class.
Did you hear that, Phil? Pete Fortino from the sewer plant went and, uh, went to school and he was valedictorian. He was number one in his class, so. Jeff's, uh, Jeff's very proud. So, with that, um, I would, uh, go over the upcoming boards and commission meetings. Planning Board is December seventeenth at six-thirty PM. The town hall, hall, excuse me, the town hall offices will be closed December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. And the town board meeting will be on December twenty-eighth at six PM. And with that, I would ask for a motion to move into executive session for attorney, consultant. I'm sorry.
I would like to take this opportunity to wish each and every one of you a very, very smile on. And a healthy one, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wanted to find out if you all got the latest seal?
Yes.
You got it though, okay.
Mrs. Maggert's asking if we received the latest seal. We said yes, and she wished you a Merry Christmas, even you, Bill. Okay, so, can I get a motion to move to executive session?
So move.
Second.
Uh, motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll keep you, uh, I'll, I'll call you, Bill. Okay. And I, I wanna wish everybody Merry Christmas.
Correct.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.